Can we have roll call, please, Mr. Thomasovich?
Ms. Choi? Mr. Grau?
Here.
Dr. Meester? Ms. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Here.
Mr. Zepka? Mr. Segal? Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Vice President Melman?
Here.
And President Lee?
Here.
We have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Also in attendance is our Acting Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Karamanos, as well as our Board Attorney, filling in for Mr. LaPera, is Mr. Lorfink. Welcome. And we have two student reps, Renee Kim and Doan Kim. Welcome. And last but not least, we have our Superintendent of the Day, Luke Chan. Welcome to the board for today.
Thank you very much. We've got a couple of superstars with us today, and we'll go over some of them a little bit later. So we'll move on to item 1.4, Public Comments Regarding Agenda Items Only. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
Arthur's at 1:25. I have quite a few things I'm going to go quickly, but if I go over, please extend a courtesy. On... Start with 7.13, the HIB specialists. What do they do? Are they proactive or reactive? I know they must be reactive because every time you've got HIB incidents, they have to, I'm sure, investigate it. But what do they do to head off this HIB incidents? Draw for the public attention, 858683, which has to do with financial management of the board by Eric, which is an outstanding job. If I misunderstood, it looks like we're going to return $3.5 million to the various reserves at the year end. If I'm wrong, Eric, correct me, but it looks like that's what it said. And that's a good job of financial management on behalf of the public. I want to know on 8.11, why we are taking a 17-point raising the cap, which is the cooperative vendors from $100,000 to $117,000. So I'm not sure why we need to do that. On 9.1, the first reading that's on the HIB policy. What are the changes? I know we have a HIB policy. This must represent a change somewhere. I started to go through it, but I didn't go through it line by line against the one that we had before, so I don't know what it was. So if somebody knows what that is and can speak to it quickly, I'd appreciate it. For the public information, Vizionis donated $1,000 to the senior week, so I think they deserve, they're appreciated for that. Facsimile signatures. What are they? Are they computer generated? I know there's multiple signatures on it, supposed to be on it. Who controls it? Meaning, once if somebody else is going to do these, is it a stamp? If it's electronic? What's the check and balance against somebody who you give authorization to? Okay. Making sure that they're doing legitimate things. We've already gotten in trouble many years ago with a business administrator doing things they shouldn't have done. So that's something I think we need to... An explanation as how you're going to check some balances on it. And the last one has to do with the temporary hiring of Dennis, who is going to replace Eric and who, I already explained, I'm going to kind of attack the position, but I'm not attacking him. I don't know the man. I'm sure he's qualified and I'm sure he's going to do a fine job. What I'm going to talk about is what we're paying him. We're paying whoever else. But we've authorized $196,000, okay, for the year for this position. And I raised the issue previously about what we're paying. We're not paying Eric anywhere near that, and we didn't. And had we raised, adjusted, and stayed closer to, you know, tuned in to the quality person, you know, you all know I like Eric. He's done a great job, in my opinion. So maybe if we were paying Eric $170,000, $180,000, he wouldn't be leaving, and we would have been able to have, retain a quality employee. It's a problem that Borough in general has, not just in the board, but also in the municipality, losing good people and underpaying them. So although I watch money, you know that, I don't like overpaying for anything. You know, that's one thing I challenge. But the one thing is, you want to keep good people, you got to pay them. And I practiced that when I was managing a department. So it's just something to pay attention to, how we can afford $196,000 for temporary. And I understand it's temporary. I know you're in a bind. You're trying to find a superintendent. You're trying to find an airplane. You've got a lot on your plate, but that's a lot of money. And also, if there's an out, meaning if you find a person, a permanent person, six months out, since there's no contract in here to read, employment contract, is it terminated? Because the wording in here says basically it's for, I forgot how many months and so many hours. But if you find a permanent solution, what is the termination clause? Do we then pay Dennis the full contract? Or is there an out for that? So thank you for being patient and letting me go over. I appreciate it. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
All right, one more. You should look into adding a swimming pool to your capital plans.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on any agenda-related items? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item 1.5, Board Member Comments. Any comments from the board on any agenda-related items?
I would love a pool, especially heated pool, too, right, Arthur? We're down for that. I would just say with salary, also keep in mind benefits. Benefits is another 30% at least. So if you add that, you'll get closer to that number, a lot closer.
Okay, so to go over the questions. For the first one, the HIB specialist. So our HIB specialists are a, it's a state requirement to have HIB specialists in each building and then a HIB coordinator for the district. The HIB specialist, the role of the HIB specialist is to investigate. So it is reactive because they are investigating claims. They are investigating all of the HIBs from start to finish, and they report those findings to the coordinator and to the principals and then eventually to myself. They also do proactive work as well. So they, you know, although the HIB specialist is focused on the reactive nature of the job, they also do that proactive work. Our HIB specialists, our counselors or case managers in some capacity, so they do have a different type of connection to the building, and they do get to work with kids all types. So we, and we take that data as a team. We take the data that we get from the HIBs, and then we evaluate it at the end of the year. So this time, we look at our HIB data. We look at our NJ SCI data, and we, that's how we determine our goals and plans for the future based on the information we get from our HIB specialists. Then the HIB policy difference. So that was a Strauss-Essmay update, that it was, the language in the update was very minimal. It was for the MOA for the police. It was, and I think Sid might report on it more on his policy committee update, but it was part of the MOA agreement with our police. That's why we had to update the policy. And Dr. Dennis Fornapple, yes, he is actually here in the audience today. I was going to introduce him during our, during my update, but he is here. He will be, he's on the agenda to be approved as our interim BA for the school year. He, so when we did, we did a cost analysis of his contract versus Eric's. So while Eric's salary, his salary is higher than Eric's, Dr. Fornapple doesn't have benefits and doesn't have any extra. So when it does come out, the district, there is a difference of, cost analysis was around 215, and Dr. Dennis is 196. So there is a slight difference in the salary. And then I would love to add a swimming pool into our capital projects. That would be great. I think Mr. Prada and Mr. Ryan right behind us are also agreeing. Eric, if you wanted to touch on the business?
Thank you, Dr. Karamanos. Relating to the year-end surplus, those resolutions are written in compliance with statute, which we have to adopt by year-end, by June 30th. But they're written with a not-to-exceed amount, so that'll give the new interim BA, as well as the administration, Finance Committee flexibility to determine what's the best route to move money into different reserves. So those not-to-exceeds isn't what they're intended for. That's not the final surplus number, which we'll touch base on the presentation when my projection is with that surplus number. So that'll just provide some flexibility. Relating to the facsimile signatures, that is electronic. That's printed through our accounting system. So it has to go through certain internal control procedures. Once all the required procedures and signatures are obtained and reviewed, then the checks are able to be cut with those three authorized signatures on the checks. And I believe that was it. Thank you. Thank you. And then the one resolution that you mentioned relating to increase in the not-to-exceed on that contract, it's an aggregate through the local cooperative. So we're increasing it 17,000. That's just based on overall current data and amount of expenditures that are needed to complete this school year. Mainly that vendor is utilized for custodial slash maintenance supplies. So we're increasing it 17,000 from the previous not-to-exceed amount. So it's going from 100 to 117, to be in line with, you know, compliance.
And I may have missed the termination clause. Dr. Fornapple does have a 30-day termination clause in his contract. So in the event we do find, and he has been very supportive in the idea of finding, helping us find someone that he can kind of pass his knowledge on to. But if we do find someone, which I hope we do sooner than later, you know, we do have that 30-day clause.
Okay, any other board member comments? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to item 1.6, Public Presentations. We have a few tonight.
We have a few different presentations tonight. The first presentation one is for our student representatives to the Board of Education. If you look on the agenda, we do have a resolution for our representatives.
Okay. So this is a resolution on, so Chan Ong, Renee Kim, and Kim, sorry, Doan. For the service on the Leonia Board of Education. Whereas our three student representative members have served with distinction on the Leonia Board of Education. And whereas through their leadership, the Leonia Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns and of young people in the community. And whereas, they have further contributed to the community by serving as valuable spokespeople, sharing the student perspective at board meetings. And whereas, their exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, district administration, and the student body. And whereas, they have maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on a school board. And whereas, they have demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting their own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Leonia Board of Education recognizes our three student representatives' dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And be it further resolved, that the members of the Leonia Board of Education extend their sincere appreciation to all three of our student representatives for their dedicated service on the Leonia Board of Education. And be it further resolved, that the members of the Leonia Board of Education extend their best wishes to all three of our student representatives in all of their future endeavors. Thank you very much.
So we have two more presentations. So what we'll do is we'll do the presentations for all three, then we will take a 10-minute break for pictures, refreshments, and then we'll get back into the regular meeting. So our next presentation, I'd like to call it Mr. Prada, to do the presentation.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank Dr. Karamanos and the members of the Board of Education for this opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate one of the greatest student athletes to attend Leonia High School. State champions don't come around often. And when they do, it's customary to commemorate the accomplishment, or in this case, accomplishments, with something special. Tonight, we are honoring Jaden Marchon's two state championships from the 2023-2024 school year with a ring ceremony. Before we present Jaden with his state championship ring, I would like to share his achievements from the 2023-2024 school year and highlight how Jaden has continued his athletic excellence in the world of track and field since graduating from Leonia High School. During the 23-24 indoor track season, Jaden earned Athlete of the Week honors, was the NJIC champion, Bergen County champion, state sectional champion, state group champion, and was the outright state champion in the 400 meter with a time of 47.43 seconds. This was the first time in school history that a Leonia student athlete was crowned state champion for track and field. Jaden holds the state record for the 600 meter and recorded the second fastest time in the nation for the 600. Jaden currently holds the indoor Bergen County record in the 400 meter and 200 meter. Jaden finished third at the New Balance Indoor National Meet in the 400 meter, earning him the title of All-American. Jaden was also named First Team All-League, First Team All-County, and North Jersey Athlete of the Year for Indoor Track. Jaden's excellence on the track continued during the spring of 2024. He earned Athlete of the Week honors, was NJIC champion in the 100, 200, 400, and 400 hurdles, Bergen County B champion in the 200 and 400, Bergen Meet of Champions in the 400, state sectional champion in the 100, 200, 400, and 400 hurdles, state group champion in the 400 and the 400 hurdles, and once again was the outright state champion in the 400 with a time of 46.93 seconds. This was Jaden's second state championship of the year. Jaden was named First Team All-League, First Team All-County, First Team All-State. He was a New Balance Nationals All-American in the 400 and the 400 hurdles. And Jaden currently holds the outdoor Bergen County record in the 400 and holds the school record for the 200, the 400, and the 400 hurdles. Many schools were interested in Jaden, and he decided to attend Georgetown University, where he continued to impress on the track. But before heading to Georgetown, Jaden qualified for and competed in the 2024 Summer Olympics in Paris. He competed for Trinidad Tobago. Jaden was a member of the 4x400 relay team. He ran the third leg, and his time of 45.63 seconds was the fastest time of the four members of the Trinidad Tobago relay team. During his freshman year at Georgetown, which he just completed, Jaden recorded the fastest time in the 400 for the Big East Conference during the indoor season and the outdoor season. His indoor time was 47.11 seconds, and his outdoor time was 46.18 seconds. Jaden's outdoor time of 46.18 set the Georgetown University record for the 400. Jaden also set the indoor school record for the 500 with a time of 1 minute 1.5 seconds. Jaden competed in the NCAA Indoor National Championships as well as prestigious pen relays. So without further ado, Dr. Karamanos would now, will now present Jaden Marchon with his championship ring.
Jaden, congratulations. On behalf of myself, on behalf of Dr. Gaitens, and on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we are so proud of you for not only the athlete that you are, but also the amazing human and person that you have grown into. We're so proud of you, and you know you always have a home here in Leonia.
Firstly, I would just like to say thank you for the Board of Ed for having me here and presenting me with that ring. And when it came to high school track, it was as much of it as an individual sport. Track took so many people for me to become who I am, from Coach Ryan, Mr. Prada, and just everybody involved in athletics and teachers being cooperative with my ridiculous schedule. And I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to be here.
So don't go anywhere because we're going to take pictures after. All right, and our last presentation for the day is for our superintendent. Mr. Lee, you want to read the proclamation for our Superintendent of the Day?
I would love to. So proclamation. Whereas Luke Chan has been named Superintendent of the Day for the Leonia Public School District. And whereas, he has fulfilled the expectations and responsibilities of this role with great enthusiasm and care, including participating in a Board of Education meeting and serving as Principal of the Day, all while representing the district with pride, integrity, and a strong sense of leadership. And whereas, the Leonia Board of Education commends Luke for his outstanding efforts and hopes this experience inspires him to continue celebrating the values of public education and consider a future in school administration and educational leadership. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Leonia Board of Education, on this 17th day of June 2025, proudly recognizes and congratulates Luke Chan on this achievement. Congratulations, Luke. All right, so we are going to take a very short break, just take some photos and congratulate our superstars that are here today.
Okay.
Thank you to the public that is here tonight and watching online. And we'll ask everyone to settle into their seats. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we are going to continue on with item 1.6, public presentations, and the presentation of the district and board of ed goals, the end of year update.
Alright, so today we are presenting the district and board of education goals end of year update. I will present for the district side, and Ms. Melman will present the board side, and then Mr. Thomas Evcich will present during the, for the goal two. Do we have the clicker? Here we go. Okay, so these were our three goals for this school year that were approved earlier in the beginning of the year, September, October. The district goals, you'll see, the first goal is around strategic planning. The second goal is about maintaining a balanced budget. And the third goal was about evaluating our current gifted and talented offerings. The board goals mirrored and supported the district goals for the school year. So we'll start with the district goal. The first district goal was about the strategic plan, the 2025 to 2030 district strategic plan. This was the goals and the milestones that we set. So it was by November, we would complete the community feedback. By January, we would have the faculty and staff input into the goals and the objectives. By March, we would share a draft of the goals, and then by June, we would have the approval for the strategic plan, which was approved at the last board meeting. So that was approved at the May 20th board meeting. To give you an overview of our strategic plan, these were the five goal areas, the five themes that came out out of all of the feedback sessions that we had. The first was around curriculum instruction, technology and technology for learning. The second was district culture. The third goal was around health and wellness. The fourth was above and beyond, and then the fifth was fiscal, physical, and human infrastructure. And each of these goals had, each of these themes had specific goals that we, as a community, decided was what we want, is what we want to strive for over the next five years. And then here listed in this graphic, you'll see the objectives outlined here for curriculum instruction. The next few years, we'll spend a lot of time talking about what the, a portrait of a Leonia lion or a portrait of a graduate, what programs we can enhance, how we can be, how our technology experiences can prepare students for the future, and focusing on enhancing our curriculum and instruction programs and offerings. For district culture, we're focusing on strengthening the diversity and inclusion in our community, fostering communication and collaboration with, and community engagement, retaining and recruiting high-quality educators, and then developing our district self-own policy. For health and wellness, we're strengthening our social-emotional programs, modernizing our school schedules, developing wellness centers, and promoting healthy habits. Our above and beyond was really about expanding our programs, our current programs and opportunities for kids, and expanding them and thinking how we can improve what we currently have. And then to achieve excellence and apply and hopefully achieve recognition programs. And then our last goal was about modernizing our facilities and thinking about our fiscal and our human infrastructure. So the strategic plan was approved last board meeting. However, we're still working on the public website. So basically, what we have approved, with the goals and objectives that we have approved, then we're building out a website to be more interactive than just a PDF on a website. This website will be linked to our district website, and will allow the public to see progress, to see deadlines, to see responsibilities. We had a feedback session last week with some community members. They came in and gave us feedback on what we currently, the structure we currently have, and ways that we can improve it to be more, to be more accessible and readable to the, to the public. We are launching a new website on July 15th, so our whole district website will be new. So we, part of that, this strategic planning website will be linked on there, and that will all be launched on July 15th. So we will send all that information out as it launches.
So we supported the creation of the, how we're supporting goal number one, how the board does it for the strategic plan to be approved by June. Dr. Karamanos mentioned that it was approved at the last board meeting for May 2025. We did establish dedicated committees that meet monthly to develop, discuss, and refine the proposed goals and objectives, and then we provided regular updates at the board of ed meetings. So there were three means of support for goal number one. Again, our board of education and public meetings, our monthly committee meetings, and then regular communication with the shared Google Drive. So for the public meetings, again, we did approve the draft of the strategic plan. We invited the public to ask questions and state concerns, and then it was shared with the public, and it's available on the district website. During upcoming meetings, the public is always welcome and encouraged to share comments. We really take that feedback and we use it. And then also, the public can always comment during the non-agenda items portion of the board meeting. So our committee meetings are non-public. We try to meet monthly. The practices and principles committee was also joined with the strategic plan committee. So we receive regular updates from Dr. Karamanos on the status of the strategic plan. We talk about questions and concerns. We have a lot of time to meet. And then we've been looking at various platforms for how the strategic plan will appear on our district website eventually. We really took a deep dive into the various indicators and how we're going to measure progress over the next five years. We're continually refining and discussing those goals and objectives as we meet. And then our education committee meetings are also linked to the goals of our strategic plan. So we're going to kind of narrow the focus of that for the next school year. Another way we support goal one is with our shared BoE Google Drive. We continue to use it. It's accessible by all board members, the superintendent and the board secretary. It really allows ease of communication. We share documents. We share agenda notes, calendars, other important information. So then all members are really accountable for any activity around the strategic planning process. New board members, when they come onboard or onboarded with the process, and they gain access to the shared drive. So we have that institutional knowledge in place.
And then I'll go over, I'll go over district goal number two. That's pretty much financial stability and planning and maintaining that budget and financial structure. So the goal by June 2025, the district will achieve and maintain a balanced budget. Building and sustaining also is a key component. Adequate fund balances with reserves aligned to the district's long-term financial plan, which will incorporate into the new strategic planning. The means of support, the first one is monthly financial reports. As you'll see in the next slide, board secretary's report, treasurer's report, transfers. Those all reviewed internally, submitted in compliance with statute, reviewed, and also mainly the transfers reviewed by the county. So that's all in compliance and maintaining that there is no negative accounts in a deficit. The other piece of support is annual audit, which is a review of an independent auditor, reviewing the surplus and providing, you know, findings and recommendations. In addition, excess surplus projection, that's an internal review that's done through my office. And the last piece is maintenance of a long-range facility plan and comprehensive maintenance plan. So the monthly financial reports, that's something that's done and provided to the district after my review within 60 days. That's pretty much making sure that every line is in compliance with what the budget was established for. And if there is any needed transfers, that's in line with, and submitted to the county for approval. In addition, we do have also a treasurer's report. That also gets submitted along with the board secretary's report within 60 days. So that's basically tying out the cash balances from all accounts. The next piece is that annual audit report. So the most recent audit report, which was dated 12/12/2024, which was last audit year, which happened this year, that basically identified a positive change in fund balance, which we have consistently tried to maintain. As you see here, that amount has increased 443,000 from last year, and the district has, it has allowed the district to move into the various reserves for capital projects, for, you know, maintenance of various buildings, roughly about 900,000 in capital reserve and a little over 600,000 into the maintenance. In addition, the district's business administrator, board secretary, myself, I monitor those balances on a quarterly basis. That's the internal document I do to establish what the projection is, whether it's cash flow and how that budget is coming out. Roughly, so this was the last quarter that I did. So this is year-end 6/30/2025. The capital reserve is estimated, and this is to your question, author, capital reserve is estimated to have a net balance of about 1.5 million. Maintenance reserve is about 1.5 million. Tuition reserve, that's something new that I established with the send-receive with Edgewater. That's valuable. When we do the budget, it gives us flexibility with that certify rate and the tuition adjustment. That's estimated to be roughly about 340,000. So that resolution, that what we did with the not to exceed, that gives flexibility with moving money into those various reserves. The underside fund balance will be maxed out at the statute level of 971,000. And then the excess surplus, what this district and administration has done, is provided tax relief year in, year out of roughly about 550,000. So that's also being maintained. The last piece is the, is the maintenance of the long-range facility plan and comprehensive maintenance plan, which is making sure that the budget and those reserves are in support with some type of plan and the needs of the district. So the first part is the long-range facility plan. That's, that's pretty much the district's current plan for capital projects. The requirement by the state is to have that plan amended, major amendment every, once every five years. The district has been in compliance with that. The last major amendment was March 2024. So we're in compliance. We're making sure that that plan is in line with our capital reserve balance. All withdrawals from that, that maintenance, from that capital reserve has to either go through the budget process, as I do the budget, or through a board resolution, which you'll see periodically through on the agenda. Roughly this year, we had about 1.4 million dollars in withdrawals from those two ways. The last piece in that long-range facility plan is the capital reserve account. And as you notice, it does not exceed the uncompleted capital projects identified in the plan. So what the state says is you could have a reserve balance. You need to have a plan to support that reserve balance. That plan, which gives a dollar amount, can't be less than what's in the reserve. The next piece is that maintenance plan, which the district has been currently maintaining. That has to be updated annually and filed by the state, with the state by November 15th. The district has been in compliance with that. That plan is also submitted to the board for approval, for transparency and for the public. And all withdrawals from that reserve is similar to the capital reserve, which it has to go through a budget process or board resolution. And it can't exceed 4% of the district's building replacement value, which we're in compliance with that. And as you see here, the total withdrawals from that maintenance reserve for this school year is a little over, actually a little under 600,000. And I'll turn it over.
Okay, so the way that we support board goal number two is here, three ways. Just to review, board goal number two was just ensuring that the district achieves and maintains a balanced budget, building and sustaining adequate fund balances with reserves aligned to the district's long-term financial plan. So three ways we support this are the monthly finance and planning committee meetings. We have special and priority meetings of the finance and planning committee as well. And then lots of communication with the business administrator. So for our monthly committee meetings, the finance and planning committee meets regularly every month to oversee the district budget. They're constantly looking for ways to improve spending, sustain adequate fund balances, again, support the BA, and really tie into the district's long-term plan, which is now aligned to the overall strategic plan. These meeting agendas and minutes are always These meeting agendas and minutes are always documented with that shared Google Drive that I mentioned, and then they're shared with the public during our regular Board of Ed public meetings when we talk about our committee meetings. We have special and priority meetings to support this goal as well. When financial needs arise, such as the increased tax levy, the recent decision to submit that application, that was conducted through a special or priority meeting. Our board members really show flexibility and commitment to the district when they meet for these priority meetings. They are not part of the regular schedule, and then they do involve coordination among the board members, the CSA, and the Business Administrator. Communication with the Business Administration is the final way we support board goal number two. There is a high level of communication between the Finance and Planning Committee, the Board of Ed members, and the Business Administrator. As you've seen, the BA is always present at committee meetings, and he works to ensure that the long-term financial goals are met. We document the meeting notes, agendas, the calendars, and other documents in the shared Google Drive, and any members not on the Finance and Planning Committee can always access the documents.
Thank you. So before I move to Goal Three, I just wanted to point out that that was Eric's last presentation for us as the Leonia Business Administrator. Eric, I just want to... Eric, I want to thank, I can't see, oh, there you go. I want to thank you for all you've done. You know, it's been four years together. Eric and I have been on this Leonia path for the past four years together. We've come a very long way from where we've started here in Leonia. I just, I thank you for everything that you've done, for being the collaborative partner for me personally through my both-acting stance, but also, you know, just doing, putting us on a really good path for the future. So I appreciate all you've done. Thank you. You can sit if you want, or if you... Yeah, take your notebook. Okay, so Goal Three is, was related to our gifted and talented. You know, we wanted to evaluate our current gifted and talented offerings and see how we can improve and grow forward. The, the goal was, we completed the needs assessment. That was part, part of the goal. We presented the findings at the April Board of Education meeting. We had the consultant come in and present the findings, and we created a path forward. The path forward is linked on our website. We held our first parent workshop, which was, we had a decent turnout of parents. It was virtual. It was about how to support students, how to support their gifted students during the summer months. So the consultant gave some tips and feedback on how to support students just based on the day-to-day work. And then we have been planning, so there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work in the beginning stages of any rollout plan. So we've been working behind the scenes to set ourselves up for September and set ourselves up for the summer and for September. We've scheduled our administrator training, so our administrators will go through an intensive training with our consultant, who will, you know, establish a best, establish best practices, define, start defining the difference between gifted education and enrichment, you know, set ourselves up for what the year is going to look like, also looking at our Danielson Observation Tool, so looking at our, the way we evaluate our staff and how gifted, how we should be looking for gifted practices when, within the evaluation tool, and reviewing our district data to better understand our student needs. As additionally, we're establishing our gifted and talented committees. So next year, they'll, each building will have a gifted and talented committee. So we've started that work, started getting that, that interest from the staff, and then planning a schedule over the summer, we'll plan a schedule for the year. We are also, as I shared earlier, we are launching a new website, and we'll have an updated and dedicated page on the website for our gifted and talented plan and our steps. And then we're also planning out our fall and winter and what that's going to look like with, within our plan. So we are on track. You know, we're making good progress, although behind-the-scenes progress, still good progress.
So the board has really supported this goal of the evaluating the current gifted and talented program and moving forward with new offerings. Our two means of support for this are our monthly education committee meetings and encouragement of public programming and communication. So our, in our education committee meetings, we meet monthly and we provide, this provides Board of Ed members a chance to review the gifted and talented program, including what Dr. Karamanos just shared with the plan forward, among other things. The committee reviews the public presentations, and we also meet with the gifted and talented consultant, Donna Reichman. We meet with her regularly to ensure collaboration and that this gifted and talented plan is aligned to the overall district goals for the program, which will, again, eventually be aligned to the strategic plan. We meet regularly, we share information via the website, regular public outreach, and we also support the needs assessment process. In our committee meetings, we dive into that as well. The second way we support Goal Three is we really encourage public programming and communication. So the Board of Ed has regularly advocated and supported public programming around the creation of this GNT program. We supported the recent presentation by Donna Reichman and the Summer Learning for Gifted Minds, that virtual program that was just offered through the Education Committee. We have been encouraging regular and consistent communication about the GNT program. We've been supporting the goals and supported the recently developed program timeline. Again, collaboration with Donna Reichman. We've been encouraging the public also to attend regular Board of Ed meetings and to provide feedback during the public comments portion.
And to wrap up our presentation, we just listed out some focuses for next year and what we will be doing at the district level. The first year of our strategic plan will be a lot of review and analysis. So we're reviewing our programs, our offerings, our opportunity, the opportunities we provide to children. So we'll be doing a lot of review and analysis and creating plans for the future. Additionally, we will start, whether it's over the summer or into the fall, our ad hoc committee for facilities to do a facilities review for goal number five about physical infrastructure. Another strategic goal that we will start, we have communication, being, creating a communication plan, you know, we have some ideas of how we want to kind of push that and support that district culture, and then continuing our gifted and talented plans. Our professional development focuses for next year, and we still, we're still ironing out specifics, but this is our, our focus in addition to the required, the state-required professional development we provide. We'll also be continuing to support our multisensory reading instruction. So especially in our younger grades, the multisensory reading has been a goal of ours for the past few years, so continuing to support that within the classroom and that application of skill. Differentiating for our students identified as gifted learners so that we'll have professional development for our staff around those practices. Expanding our Holocaust and Genocide education offerings, looking at what we currently, and the lessons we currently provide, and how we can expand what we currently do. Strategies to promote positive interpersonal behaviors, especially at the middle school and high school. How can, how can we support students in really learning how to interpersonal, learning how to behave and resolve conflicts with each other? And then implementation of our AI, of AI and technology in a forward-thinking way. And that is all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for a great presentation. That brings us to item 2.1, Student Representative Comments. Any comments from our student reps? Okay, that brings us to the approval of consent agenda items. Can I have a motion and a second? Motion, Dr. Meester, a second? Second, Mr. Zepka? Okay, do we have any items for discussion? Okay, seeing none, can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Choi? Mr. Grau? Dr. Meester? Ms. Molina?
Yes, but abstaining on anything ACS-related.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. Segal? Ms. Thompson? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you. For those of you following on, along the agenda, all the consent agenda items were adopted and approved, and that brings us down to item number 10, new business. Unless anyone has any items that they would like to discuss other than 10.1 and 10.2, actually, and 10.4, unless anyone wants to discuss 10.3, I'd like to make a, receive a motion for item 10.5, which includes all of the aforementioned items. So that's a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.4. Okay, that's Ms. Thompson, second. Dr. Meester, can I roll call, please?
Ms. Choi? Mr. Grau? Dr. Meester? Ms. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yeah.
Ms. Thompson? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business, 10.5.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 11, which is the second public comment section on non-agenda items. Before we open that up, I do want to make a statement. I apologize, the star is up above under item four threw me off there. I skipped over administrative reports under number five. So that brings us Acting Superintendent Dr. Karamanos, I apologize.
Thank you. I still have some reporting to do. Okay, so a few, few items for my report. End of year attendance, to give you the attendance counts, at the end of the 2526 school year, at ACS, we have 524 students. At LMS, we have 662 students. At LHS, we have 794 students. Our total enrollment in the district, including out-of-district placements, is 2,000. Yes, even, exactly. Yep. Okay, so that, that's for our end of year, end of year enrollment, that's as of today. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Park for his Master Board Member certification. He received that a few weeks ago, and we're, you know, Master Board Member, we're happy to have you. Anybody else who wants to be a Master Board Member, ask Mr. Park for his tips and tricks. Also, wanted to share that the district was one of 12 districts in New Jersey to receive the Teacher Culture and Climate Grant. So we received $70,000 to spend on focusing on eliminating administrative tasks and redundancies for our teachers, to be able to focus more on supporting students rather than doing stuff that teachers have to do. This grant is from the New Jersey Department of Education to support teacher retention in the field of education. So we are proud to be one of the 12 districts in New Jersey to receive this grant. And it's that time of the year, last, last board meeting of 2520, of 2425, jumping in your head. Lots of end-of-year activities from kindergarten to pre-K moving up celebrations to Senior Week. We are all over the place, we are everywhere. We want to thank all of our staff and our students for the remarkable year we've had. We've had a crazy year, but it's been, it's been a good one. To our board representatives, thank you for all you've done for the board and being board representatives, but also in the building. I've seen what you've done on a daily basis, and you've done great work for LHS. So we're really proud of you, and we look forward to hearing where you go off to next. Today, we had our EVG clapout for the class of 2025. So for the first time, we sent our class of 2025 students down to EVG, and they walked around the EVG building in their caps and gowns, and they clapped, they were clapped out by their old teachers. So it was great. Tomorrow, we have the ACS clapout. So our class of 2025 that, that moved up from ACS will come to ACS, and will walk around the building in their caps and gowns and receive a clapout from their teachers here. Tomorrow night is also EVG Grade Six graduation. Excited to be there and hand our EVG sixth graders their Welcome to Leonia t-shirts. We have the, for the board's knowledge, we, at graduation, which was started last year, we hand a EVG graduate, as they get off the stage after they receive their diploma, as they walk off the stage, we hand them a Leonia Public Schools t-shirt so that they are officially part of our district. Thursday is LMS graduation. Friday is ACS moving up in the morning, and then we wrap up the year on Friday with LHS graduation at the high school. Congratulations to our class of 2025. It's been a great year, and we look forward to seeing all, where you all, all your future endeavors, where it takes you. And that is it for my final report of 2425. What a great year.
Thank you. Almost stole that from you.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, and that brings us to item 5.2, Mr. Thomassevich, for your final School Business Administrator Report.
Thank you, President Lee. As you see on tonight's agenda, there is a lot of financial year-end stuff, so just to kind of wrap up the year, you know, you'll see year-end resolutions and resolutions for next year. So there's really no, nothing specific to report on, other than that the district is moving in a healthy financial position going forward. And I just want to just kind of make a statement. I just wanted to thank this board, the public, as well as administration, especially Dr. Karamanos for all the support and that, that everyone has provided me. Four years in serving Leonia, it has been truly an honor to serve as the Business Administrator and Board Secretary for four years. When I got here, I knew, you know, this was kind of a place that I wanted to be. I knew the community and, and the district was well-established, supporting education. So it was, you know, a place that I wanted to be. Unfortunately, you know, there is some other, other opportunities and other areas that I, you know, wanted to pursue that kind of, at the time, it's, you know, it's, it's the right time for me, but, you know, it's, it's kind of bittersweet, bittersweet to, you know, to leave at the same time, because Leonia is a great school district, great board, great, great community. With that being said, I know you're in good hands with the new interim BA, Dr. Dennis. So congratulations on, on coming aboard and welcome. But there are some great projects going on that unfortunately I would like to see completed, especially at the high school for the students. There is going to be a new media center for next year. So unfortunately, you guys won't be here, but we're trying to get it sooner than later. But as, as the board knows, you know, purchasing, bidding, and compliance, you know, it's, it's a long process, as well as there's going to be new, new buses rolling out through, through Leonia and through the state. We have seven EV buses that we're hopefully, should be getting on, on board with EV chargers at the high school. In addition, there are some other, you know, renovations we're doing with the science wing. And obviously, with the strategic planning, there's, there's going to be new projects in line with the district's goals. So just overall, thank you, and, and if you, anytime you need support, Dr. Karamanos and the board, you're more than welcome to reach out. I'm resigning but not retiring, so I'll be around. So anytime I could help, you know, Leonia, I will. But thank you.
Thank you so much, Eric. You'll be missed. And if you want to come back to see the projects get done, I mean, we'll leave a seat open for you. Okay, that brings us to item six, committee reports. We'll start with our student representatives.
Thank you, President Lee. For tonight, we have four different items to report. First, seniors had an incredible week filled with memorable activities, including prom, the pool party, Dorney Park, and more events dedicated to celebrating the class of 2025, all of which ended successfully. Second will be a reminder that senior sunset will take place on Thursday, June 19th at 7:45 PM at the Overpack near the amphitheater. And third would be, as this school year comes to close, we wish all students the best of luck on their final and hope everyone finishes the year strong. To our seniors, congratulations to our, on graduating. We wish you have... We wish you have a bright and successful future ahead. Just a reminder, all seniors must report to the Lithe Theater by 5:00 PM on graduation day. The ceremony will begin promptly at 6:00 PM. Lastly, finally, we would like to congratulate our newly-elected Board of Education Student Representatives for next year, Senior Representative Ara Cho and Junior Representative Mia Polly Murray. We wish them great success in their new roles. Thank you so much for everyone. It's been an honor and great to serve a student representative role. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You guys will also be missed. We appreciate all your service. And for the public that doesn't know it, the student representatives' position on this board is extremely important because as much as, you know, the board sets policies, and our administrators are involved with students and setting the general educational programming, having the feedback from the kids for living it, there's nothing, there's no replacement for that, so thank you. So that brings us to item 6.2, Board of Ed Practices and Principles.
Yep, not too much. We are meeting again next Tuesday, the 24th.
Thank you, and an excellent presentation tonight. All right, 6.3, Buildings and Rounds.
We haven't met since the last meeting, so no updates at the moment.
Okay, thank you. The 6.4, Education.
We met yesterday. We discussed the next steps on the Gifted and Talented Program, as Dr. Caramanos outlined. It's also published on our website. We discussed kind of summer priorities, which include the website as a birthday present to me, to be launched on July 15, which is my birthday. We talked about other priorities that Dr. Caramanos and the administrative team and the supervisors will be working on throughout the summer and the following year. I also wanted to make sure that I highlighted for everyone that on today's agenda, we voted on a finalized calendar for next year, which has a fixed last day of school, where two snow days are built in around Memorial Day weekend. So if we use those two snow days, then we will have school the Friday and Tuesday of Memorial Day weekend. And if we don't, we, then, we don't use the snow days, then we won't have school those two days. But that allows for much easier planning for all of our students, their families, and staff for, across all three buildings. That means a set graduation date for the class of 2026.
Sorry, guys. But we're making changes. Okay, that brings us to item 6.5, Finance and Planning. We also actually haven't met since the last meeting, and I'm a bit remiss that I missed the opportunity to have Eric join us for one final Finance and Planning meeting, but with the budget being set, there really isn't much to discuss at this point. But we will restart meeting once the new school year begins. And that brings us to Policy.
So we actually met at the end of May. We covered a number of different policies, including one that was on the first reading for today, in terms of HIB revisions mandated by the state. In addition, we did discuss a number of other policies, some of which have come from Trenton, and others that are probably a little bit more specific to the district. It does require a little bit further discussion, so we're going to hold a special committee meeting sometime in August to regroup on that, and then have that ensured to be on the agenda at an upcoming Board of Ed meeting.
Thank you very much. And now we move to the end of the agenda, correct, okay. All right, we've already taken care of item 10, New Business. So that brings us to item 11, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. As I began saying before, I do have a statement that I'd like to read to the public in response to some comments that the Board of Educa- has received. So I'll just go ahead and read that to the public. So I'd like to take a moment to just, to address the public regarding some questions received about the Leonia Board of Education's policies and educational programming surrounding sexual abuse and the alleged lack of adequacy of same. While the questions to the board appear to be driven by reported incidents of sexual abuse that took place within the district over 40 years ago, this statement speaks directly to the current policies of the district as it relates to sexual abuse. I'm making this statement today in an effort to inform the public about the extensive measures the district goes through and the policies and regulations we are beholden to, to ensure the safety of our students. Please note that all the board's policies and regulations are available for review right on our website at www.leoniaschools.org, where you can go to District, and then select Policy, and you'll find a button right in the middle of the page that takes you to both the policies and regulations. The public may be wondering why I'm not directly answering some of the questions submitted to the board. It's not due to a lack of understanding of the requests or out of insensitivity to the situation. Rather, it is simply due to the fact that the Leonia School District is currently in active litigation in a case regarding the aforementioned matter. The Board is beholden to the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, which is the standard of care to which we are held by the School Ethics Commission. The specific section of the Code of Ethics which applies is as follows. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. So in accordance with the Code of Ethics and under advisement by our council, after this statement, the Board will not be making any further comments or answer questions pertaining to active litigation. Make no mistake, this Board of Education takes incidents of any form of abuse extremely seriously. To that end, I will highlight the comprehensive measures currently in place to safeguard our students from inappropriate conduct and to educate our students regarding same. The information that follows is excerpted from a document that is currently available on our website and references various sections of our policies and educational programming. I'm going to ask you to bear with me, because this is an extensive list, and will take a bit of time. I'll begin with our policies. Mandatory background checks. The Board conducts criminal history record checks for all employees, volunteers, health services personnel, construction contractors, and Board of Education members, as required by state law and board policy. Comprehensive employment screening. When hiring staff with regular student contact, the district contacts current and former employers from the past 20 years to check for pending or substantiated allegations of child abuse or sexual misconduct. Applicants must provide employer lists, authorize information release, and attest to any allegations or investigations. The Board of Examiners also updates school districts on suspended or revoked teaching certifications. Policies prohibiting inappropriate conduct. Employees receive policy manuals and training covering restrictions on communications with students and specific prohibitions. Policies 3281 and 4281 prohibit staff from transporting students in personal vehicles unless approved emergency or special circumstances arise and require professional relationships. Policies 3283 and 4283 prohibit improper electronic communications, such as text messages or emails, while policies 3282 and 4282 govern social networking use. Policies against harassment and bullying. Policies 3362 and 4352 address sexual harassment of staff members, and policy 5512 prohibits harassment, intimidation, or bullying against students. Mandated staff training. Staff receive initial and annual training on expectations, student safety, recognizing signs of child abuse, and their legal responsibilities as mandated reporters. And again, all these policies are available on our website. Mandatory reporting obligations. Staff must report inappropriate conduct or electronic communication violations to the superintendent. Certificated staff must report any arrest or indictment for a crime to the superintendent within 14 days. Failure to do so can result in dismissal. All staff must report instances of violence, vandalism, or harassment to the school principal. All employees, volunteers, or interns must immediately notify child welfare authorities of alleged missing, abused, or neglected children, and also inform the principal. Training on these reporting procedures is part of the orientation that all teachers receive. The Board is also a signatory to the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement with Law Enforcement, requiring notification of potential crimes on school property or reasonable belief of child abuse to appropriate agencies, including the Department of Children and Families Division of Child Protection and Permanency, Institutional Abuse Investigation Unit, or law enforcement. The superintendent is required to notify the State Board of Examiners if a certificated staff member accused of unbecoming conduct resigns, retires, is suspended, non-renewed, or terminated. This also applies if DCF substantiates abuse, neglect, allegations, abuse or neglect allegations, or raises concerns about a certificated teaching staff member, or if a staff member failed to report child abuse as per state law. Student support mechanisms. The district maintains a confidential tip line. It's currently raved, but soon changing to stop it with the rollout of our new website. For, and that, the confidential tip line is for anonymous reporting of inappropriate student or staff conduct. The Policy Committee regularly reviews and updates policies based on law changes or district issues. School counselors are available resources for students and families regarding safety concerns as well. Next, I'm going to go over the educational programming for the school district. Student education on safety and wellness. The Leonia Public Schools integrates developmentally appropriate instruction into its K-12 curriculum, aligning with New Jersey statutory requirements and the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for comprehensive health and physical education, abbreviated as NJSLS CHPE. Students in grades K-12 receive instruction in sexual abuse and assault awareness to recognize unsafe situations, establish boundaries, and identify trusted adults. Grades 6 through 12 include lessons on affirmative consent and healthy relationships, covering consent, respectful relationships, and managing peer pressure. Middle and high school curricula include digital safety and sexting awareness, covering sexting, social media safety, and consequences of inappropriate digital behavior. Mental health education is woven into the CHPE curriculum at all grade levels, focusing on emotional well-being, self-regulation, help-seeking behaviors, and reducing stigma. Students also receive instruction on domestic and child abuse awareness, including how to recognize and report signs of abuse. This instruction is delivered by certified health educators and supplemented by school counseling programs and initiatives. Curriculum Oversight and Compliance. The Health and PE curriculum is aligned with 2020 NJSLS CHPE and updated regularly. Instruction ensures age-appropriate alignment across grade levels and has been determined compliant with state requirements in a recent CUSAC evaluation. Commitment to confidentiality and culture of safety. All staff are reminded of confidentiality and reporting obligations. Building leaders maintain protocols for documenting and escalating concerns with law enforcement and child welfare agencies. The district promotes a see-something, say-something culture and provides multiple avenues for student voice and reporting. Ongoing commitment. The Board and administration are competent in their policies and practices, which align with best practices for student safety. Policies are publicly available, and the district is committed to implementing New Jersey's legislative and, and curricular requirements to foster safe, informed, and supportive learning environments. As you can see from the exhaustive list I just read, when I say the school district takes avoiding, identifying, and reporting of sexual abuse seriously, it's not just words coming out of my mouth. These are policies and practices that the school district abides by to ensure the safety of our students. I want to share an incident, not in detail, which occurred last year in the school district. The school was alerted to a former student being on campus grounds. Building administrators were alerted and responded immediately to a perceived potential threat on the campus due to there being someone that's not a student, staff, or faculty member on the grounds. Ultimately, it turned out that the former student was having a difficult time at home and did not have anywhere to go. The place they turned to was our school district, because to them, the school is a safe environment. That is the atmosphere we foster, encourage, and set policies towards, and is a perfect example of the district we strive to be. The public is welcome to speak on this topic during the second public speaking session, and any other topic you'd like to speak about. The Board will take your comments and questions pertaining to this matter or any other matter under advisement. However, I remind the Board, the public here tonight, and those viewing at home, that under the advice of our council, the Board will not be making any additional comments on, on the aforementioned matter of the pending litigation for the reasons I mentioned in my opening statement. Thank you, and with that, we'll move on to the public portion of the speaking comment, the public comment portion of the speaking. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and address.
You don't have to comment on what I'm going to say. I'll bet you won't complain when you don't comment, but I'm going to say what I'm going to say.
Absolutely.
So my name is Dan Slideman, 177 Lakeview Avenue. As you know, I'm a victim of Mr. A, the predator that existed in this school for 14 years. And while I appreciate your long comments here, you're missing the point that we're trying to raise to you here. You're asking us to trust you, that you have the best policies in place, and yet, in 2019, when New Jersey passed the new sexual abuse law, and since 2021, you all have had information about there being multiple victims. You have done nothing but hide it, cover it up, and have not met what I believe is your responsibility when that new law was passed. And so now you're asking us to, to just assume that you are also making the best decisions about the policies for the children in this school district, when there are better policies out there, like the ones that I have raised, which, from the Boys and the Girls Club, where there's regular third-party reviews, and where there's a lot more to the policy than you have gone through. Secondly, it's time for this school board to take responsibility here. You have victims, we've had seven or eight victims who have come forward in the last 24 hours talking about, for the first time, about what happened to them in this school with that teacher. And that's just in the last 24 hours. Had you taken your responsibility that you had, starting in 2021, and made it safe for victims to come forward, every one of those people that have come forward in the last 24 hours could have come forward in 2021 and been getting help and support. But instead, you have covered it up, you've hidden legal settlements, and now us as victims have been left with no choice but to come here in these public spaces and talk about incredibly painful things, because we know there's more victims out there. They're here tonight, they're going to talk to you. There is more coming out all the time. This is your responsibility as a board. And for the, this is my third meeting. And the way I've been treated by you all in the first two meetings with indifference and being ignored, and now you're asking us to say and trust you that you have the right policies to protect children today? Or that you're out there saying the things that need to be said for all of these victims? Because you're not. It's why we're here. It's why I've come back, and that's why I'm going to continue to come back. Because you have a responsibility. We know you weren't here in the 1980s and 70s when this happened. But this is, there are victims here that are still feeling what happened to them in this building, or at Mr. A's house, or in his car, in all of the places where he was abusing children. None of us want to be here talking about this. I never imagined that I'd be standing here having this conversation with you all. Never wanted to do it. But here I am, because you all are not meeting your responsibility. There are people that are hurting. Some of them are here tonight, you're going to hear from them. You should respond to them. You can ignore me. you can ignore me, you can legal up for me, that is fine, but I want you to hear what other folks have to say here. And some folks, I just met them as fellow victims in the last 24 hours, and there's more coming all the time. So I am asking you to put down your financial concerns or all the other kind of things and have some moral concern for what happened here. It's time for the Leonia to come to grips with what happened. It's time, and you all are in the position to lead that, and it's time for you to lead it. So I'm now gonna turn it over to other victims.
Thank you. Are we on here? Good evening, Mike Gonzalez from 115 Irving Street. And I'm here today as a survivor of child sexual abuse by John Agonasty. I was molested over 500 times while I was a student in Leonia, and 99% of those times was right inside the classroom, down the hall from the library. For years, nobody ever spoke about what Mr. A did to me and to others. Just recently, I found out something that crushed me even more. My younger brother was also a victim of Mr. Agonasty, which started at the age of only five years old. I never learned how to read or write properly because I, because of what I went through. School was supposed to be a safe place, but for me, it became pain. I carried a lot of guilt, because I was probably one of the first victims of Mr. Agonasty. And if I had spoken up, maybe others would have been spared, including my younger brother. I ended up joining the Army, and I believe the Army saved my life, but when I came home on leave, I learned that in 1981, another victim of Mr. A finally came forward. And what I did, and what it did to the town of Leonia, and what did it do to the town of Leonia? What did they believe the child? They supported Mr. A instead. That moment broke me all over again. This led me to the lowest point I've ever been in my life. I found where Mr. A lived. I knocked on his door, ready to do something unthinkable, which was taking my abusive's life. The only thing that spared him was that he walked into another room, and I came to the realization that my anger and trauma could not get the best of me, and I walked away. All these years, I stayed silent, but now, I know it's time to speak. I believe in God, has been telling me that this is the right time, especially with recent accusations coming about our current police chief. I'm here tonight to speak the truth, demand that Leonia finally take accountability of what happened, not just to me, but to many others. We were ignored, we were silenced, and we were forgotten. And for 14 years, from 1968 to 1981, that one person asked questions about what was really going on. No one ever wondered what happened during all these years before somebody spoke out. How many kids had to suffer in silence? I hope my voice encourages others, survivors of Mr. A, to come forward. There will be so many still suffering in silence, and I want them to know they're not alone, know that Leonia needs to face the truth, and I would just like to say one more thing. I would like to thank my three daughters and my wife, one daughter, my wife's here tonight, for sticking by me and being my rock all these years, even what I put them through, a lot of my anger and my emotional trauma, and I know, but none of you people were here at the time, you know, no blame game, but we've been saying Leonia has to take responsibility. And this is the right time, and I just thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Board. My name is Joey, I'm Mike's younger brother. At five years old, I came here to kindergarten, expecting an education, and a good life, and that got turned around. It's hard for me to speak about it, I'm not as open as my other guys. Abuse lasted five or six years until I was 12, 14. I know me and my brother have settled with the town of Leonia, and thank you, I appreciate that. We came to an agreement with the lawyers and the Board of Ed and our attorneys, and I appreciate for the Board of Ed stepping up and admitting, not admitting, but coming to a conclusion, it's never gonna end. I became an alcoholic over this, I'm still an alcoholic. Alcohol is the pain of what happened to me at five years old. It's hard for me to talk about it, that's why victims don't talk about it, because it's embarrassing, it's painful. I was talking to Paul tonight, he graduated with me, and I never thought he was abused, and the first thing we said to each other, we couldn't open up back in the 80s and told anybody about this, because things were different back then, we were been, people would look at us different, and we just couldn't do it. It never ends, the hurt, the pain. I would just ask for, in the future, if all this has come true, is just to the town of Leonia and the Board. You guys weren't here, it's so hard for me to talk to every one of you as guys, because this wasn't your problem, you're new people here. But just wanted to know, the pain never ends of any kind of abuse, sexual, physical, and emotional abuse, and I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hi, this is Paul King, 62, Paul and Boulevard. Not sure how this is gonna go. Moved here in 68. I've been waiting for this day for over 50 years, 50 years. I was abused by Mr. A in third and fourth grade, two and a half years, could have been I've lived with Mr. A's trauma for so long, I buried it away. In 24 hours, my life has changed. I thank Mike, Joe, Dan for the courage of stepping up, and I'm here now. I thank my kids. Thank my wife. I hope that none of you have ever experienced sexual assault. Statistically, other people in this room have. In the last 24 hours, I've made some posts publicly, people have come to me, there's many more people, many people. So what do I want? That's a good question. I don't know, but I do know that I want what's fair. I want the people that are victims to be free to come out, to heal. I'm not thinking about the money. There's a saying that a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. This crisis has been going on for over 50 years, and it's been wasted by multiple boards, mayors, pillars of the community for 50 years. People are thinking about it in terms of litigation and not the human aspect. The Board of Ed failed in 1980, when this first all came about. Marsha Wilson came forward. Prior to 1980, other parents came forward, I'm hearing about it now, they're coming to me in confidence. The administration failed these kids, they failed me, and they failed Mike, Dan, Joe, and we've had a whole list of other people. They failed in 1980, they failed in 2019, and you failed this over the last five years. And I know the Board always changes, I was on the Board. I know that Mr. Lee, you speak for the Board, nobody else here can talk, I was one of those people who can't talk, and I got plenty to say, so I know how that feels. I'm a taxpayer, so I'm invested that way. But I think my purpose is to help people heal, and I will find as many people as I can, for as long as I can, and we will build a coalition of people. The Board has an opportunity to form a committee and work with the community to make amends, or not. In the construction industry, when we have a fatality, you know what we do? We call the family, we say we're sorry. We get right up there and we communicate, we build trust. The problem with the dialogue with the mayor and council and with the Board of Ed, this kind of dialogue, there is no dialogue. It's a horrible, horrible system. I'm talking to you, you're not talking to me, I can't ask you guys questions, you won't answer them. This whole system is broken, but that's neither here nor there, it's a system we have. But this is an opportunity to work with the community. I made announcements on social media within the town, within Facebook, and within 24 hours, we've got a tremendous amount of support. Mr. Lee, you're the leader here, we're the superintendent. You've got two options. One is to engage, and the other one is not to. I believe Mr. A is dead, I don't know, he's dead, right? So he's gone. I'm fortunate, I've got a job, I've got a family, financially I'm okay. There are victims of Mr. A that are not as lucky. I have therapy once a week, that's helped. I woke up six times last night talking to myself, six times. I'm not a pillar of this community, I'm a member of the community, and just because I've been here for 50 some odd years doesn't make me any better than the person that moved in last week, it's not lost on me. I went through ACS, I went through the middle school, I went through the high school, I think I did pretty good. My three kids, they went through the school here, I love the school, I've got a lot of respect for the school, I think it does many great things. But what this Board has done, and now we find out there was a $6 million settlement, the community didn't even know about that. Arthur Ziyat knew about it, he comes to these meetings more than anybody, no. Can you imagine? Just imagine if you were me, and you found out about this, can you imagine that? Think about it, you guys, and I'm sure there's a couple new members here that weren't involved in that, you guys have to live with that. And unfortunately, well fortunately, you weren't here when this all went, when this happened, but you inherited, and I get that, it's not lost on me. Guys, this is a huge opportunity to do the right thing.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Yes, this is the public speaking comment, uh, speaking portion of the, the agenda. Yes, please pick up the microphone, provide your name and address.
Okay, I'm totally unprepared, my name's Rebecca Wilson, I grew up in Leonia, I went through ACS, Leonia Middle School, Leonia High School for two years, after which I finished high school in Hawaii. I made a post on the list, or if some people may have seen, but I feel completely traumatized by the Mr. A scandal by proxy. My brother was a student of his, and I don't want to go into what my brother's trauma was, because that's his business, but it was such a dramatic event in my childhood, I was two years younger than my brother, that I accompanied my mother, when she went to retrieve my brother from one of these after-school parties he would have at his basement apartment in Fort Lee, New Jersey, I was in a second grade, I witnessed the door opening to the dark apartment, this teacher coming to the door, tucking his shirt back and his pants, kids running around the apartment in the dark screaming, it was such a chaotic, traumatic memory. My mother desperately saying, where is my son? She had to track down my son, he was supposedly at an after-school party, and Mr. A would take kids in his car, he would take them to his apartment without permission from parents. I had a very on-the-ball mother who was, you know, always involved in her kids' lives and, you know, tracked down my son, she, I mean, tracked down my brother, she found out where this man's apartment was, she went there, she went there in person, she retrieved my brother from the apartment, but some of my friends weren't so lucky, they had, came from single mom households. This man preyed on kids who had no parent protection. And my mother was one of the first whistleblowers in the late 1970s, she went to the principal of ACS, she said, this man's behavior is inappropriate, you know, he had my son at his apartment, I've witnessed him with the kids in the car, he was letting kids sit on his lap to try out the steering wheel, I mean, she went on and on and on, and the principal at the time at ACS dismissed my mother's complaints, and all he did was switch my brother from Mr. A's class to Rosemary Seitel's class. That was his solution, was just to put my brother in another class. And so when, years later, when Mr. Iani walked down Broad Avenue with his graphic sign, which said, painted, in these crudely painted letters, it said, "Teacher Touches Boy's Penis", I saw the sign, and I was like, Mom, he's talking about that man. I mean, this is three years after my mother had first complained to the principal of ACS about this teacher's inappropriate behavior. So I'm telling you, every man here that's spoken tonight, I believe you all, every one of you, I believe you all, and it's such a, an injustice that all of these victims were isolated and suffered in silence for years, and that's all I have to say.
If I may, real quick, just add to, to a couple things, this is a text I got earlier today from a woman in town. Can't be there tonight, but want you to, want to tell you how incredibly brave you are. I lived through that and supported Mr. A. I lived through that and supported Mr. A at the time. I feel awful. That's not the only one of these I got. I was in Mr. A's basement apartment. That's where the abuse happened to me exclusively, not in, not in his classroom, as well as in his blue Chevy, or blue Nova, whatever that car was with a white top. Happened to me over two and a half years, three, four days a week. I got baseball games, Mets games, and I got butter rolls from the deli right over here. They were 25 cents. He bought them, bought me every day. He was grooming me. He had it down. I can't tell this Board enough about what he did to the lives of so many boys and perhaps girls. I don't know. Don't miss this opportunity to do the right thing. It'll go a long way. I'm not involved in any lawsuit. You can speak to me. Dan has got his own thing, whatever that is. I don't know, and I don't care. The abuse was horrible. And, and I wish it was as benign as, not benign, I don't mean to diminish that, but it was bad. You guys have a very, very unique opportunity, and it's a difficult thing to do. So anyway, thank you.
Just for the record, the public speaking portion typically, members from the public are allowed to speak once. But given the sensitivity of the subject tonight, we will allow an exception.
I want to clarify that you can have any conversation you want with Paul and Mike and anybody else. Keep me out of it. But they, I don't want us to be any way in the way of you all doing what you need to do.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Please step up to the podium, provide your name and address. Could you please use the microphone? It's on the podium.
I want to keep it succinct because I tend to go all over the place. I'm Marsha Antell. I live in Leonia on Magnolia Place. I'm here 44-plus years. I'm a psychotherapist in active private practice at the age of my late 70s. The subject of trauma is front and foremost in my life. I actually am here tonight because I recently connected with the King family, each one of them in different ways. I'm here also to get away from my own personal trauma, which is my family in Israel that is now hunkering down and hiding and trying to avoid bombs. So relatively speaking, there's a lot going on. I've worked with systems my whole life. I was a director of many programs over the years at mental health centers. I ran a psychiatric emergency service. I worked with day programs for psychotic and for very disturbed individuals. The subject of trauma, your hands are full. You've got the Holocaust education. You've got the gender identification. You've got the abuse. You've got your hands full. And you're a board, and you do the legal, and you do all the diplomatic, political things that you have to do. I think what I'm hearing tonight is an appeal to the humanity, which is in the room. I mean, it's possible there's a predator sitting right here. There might be a predator on the Board. Because people are people, and it doesn't matter what level you're at. It's your colleague who's, you know, working with you for 10 years, and you don't know what's going on in their life. Or it's a stranger. I'm also a brand-new grandmother at this formative age. I have three very young grandchildren. One of my kids, my son-in-law wants to move into Leonia. I raised the girls here through the schools, all three schools, two daughters. They're around 40 now. They're having their own children. And there's talk about them moving back into town. So the educational system is very important to me. There was a guidance counselor in the middle school that my kids accessed, and they liked her very much. Constance Hill. I don't know if any of you know her, Connie Hill? Oh my God, I must be really old, you know? But she was receptive and open to the kids. I just am curious. I know that New Jersey schools are mandated to teach the Holocaust and the lessons of the Holocaust. I was instrumental in those years at getting some of these programs developed. I have training in post-traumatic stress for the Holocaust population and genocide, the Armenians, and the whole area of public speaking. But the area of sexual abuse is in homes. It's in schools. And the front line of defense is teachers and nurses. And it does start in the elementary, well, maybe even daycare centers. So I'm terrified of my young grandchildren who now are starting to move into the systems. And I'm terrified of them being away from the protective environment of their home. And I think Paul mentioned the trusting of the schools, the adults, the educators. So anyways, I just want to sum up with, I have super hypersensitivity. Right now, I'm living in an altered state myself with my family. But this subject itself, I don't know what all of you are thinking about. What can I do in my role? You know, I'm a superintendent, you know? I'm a financial, you know, administrator. I'm a student representative, whatever. What, what role can I play in all of these areas? And it is committees. It is open dialogue. It's educating. And the teachers, I know, have their hands full because I have millions of them over 44 years in my practice. And the teachers complain about the frustration of working in a school system. And it is a very hard job. But as administrators, as a Board, I don't know what you want to take away from what you heard tonight. You know, just another group of, you know, people who are disgruntled and are looking for help, but they're coming to the wrong place, et cetera. I know all of you probably have children. Don't you think about these things? Don't you think about your kids? I mean, I know I'm wheeling my granddaughter in the carriage. She's 18 months old. And these strangers come up and they start touching her. And my reaction is, get your hands off of her. You know, what are you doing? She's not property. But you are parents, and you are brothers and sisters and mothers and fathers and husbands. And, you know, you know, in your own families, you've got alcoholics and you've got all kinds of troubled people. So the denial that takes place is enormous. I don't know how you're going to dribble down what you're hearing tonight to your teachers and to your frontline people that are with the children, the nurses, the teachers. I don't know what committees you have in place. I saw Holocaust education is mandated, you know? What do you do with it? What is the Holocaust education? Do you think I've gotten any calls from any of my neighbors saying, oh, my God, I'm, I feel so bad for you? I mean, where is everybody, hunkering down? Everybody's living in their own world. So what are you going to do with your staff? What are you going to do with training? And what are you going to do with the policies? Because policies are wonderful, but how are they implemented? That's the question you have to ask yourself and take some responsibility because your own kids and grandchildren are at risk, not just the group that comes here. That's the lesson for me tonight, and I hope for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members? Any members from the public? Please come and step up to the podium, provide your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jiwan Kim, 185 Harrison Street. Now, a friend's son has been experiencing antisemitism at Leonia Middle School. And coincidentally, the timing of each incident coincides with major events that happened in the Middle East. So the latest one that he experienced was just last week when the missiles went from Israel to Iran. And then he was saluted at LMS. So things happen. So now here, my question is, how are, how are Leonia schools addressing this? And how are we being relevant? Because obviously, right now, we see that what's happening in the world is bleeding into our communities, that we're not living in the bubble. And I read that recently, the BOE passed a five-year strategic plan related to diversity and inclusion. And it sounds really good, and it's really well-written. Now, what is the timeline to achieve each goal in the strategic plan? So we have the procedures very general. So what is the more practical? What is the actual process? And when will the specifics be provided? Now, we have policies, and how will it be enforced?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will close this portion of the meeting and move on to Board comments. Any comments from the Board members?
So I can respond to the last comment about the strategic plan to share. We did, the Board did pass the five-year strategic plan. You know, as we said in our presentation in Goal One, that was the, the goal was about the strategic plan. The timelines and the process and the administrator or the, the person responsible for executing that will all be part of the public website that will be launched on July 15th. So that information will be sent to the public on July 15th with specific when to expect what, especially when it comes to the various goals and the various expectations that we have set for ourselves.
Thank you. Any other Board member comments?
I just wanted to thank everyone for their bravery today. I know when you say the President only can speak, that's really not true. And as you can see, I'm speaking right now. And it, it's touching, it's moving. We hear you. You're heard. And my sympathy and heart goes out to any victim that's out there. And I apologize that you had to experience this. It's, it's hurtful.
Any other Board members? Okay. Seeing none, we are on item number 13, which is executive session. We do need to go into executive session tonight. We anticipate to be enclosed for up to an hour. So for the Board, for anyone from the public that's watching online, it will be quite a while before we do return back. When we do come back, we will come back. And the only things that will be addressed are personnel, which cannot be discussed publicly. And then we'll move to adjournment. So for the members of the public that are here tonight, we thank you for coming out. We thank you for your sharing. But we do have to ask you to, to leave the room so that we can go into executive session. Thank you. Can I have a motion to go into executive, please? Motion, Mr. Segal, second.
Second.
Mr. Grau, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, 905.